I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Council of the City of Springdale for September 4th, 2024. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which is standing one nation, under God, indivisible, with every being and justice for all.
All right, Ms. Rutter, if you could take role?
Mr. Gleves.
President.
Mr. Jacobs.
Present.
Ms. McFarland.
Present.
Mrs. Salbenwaiske.
Present.
Mr. Vanover.
Present.
Mrs. Webster.
Present.
Mr. Anderson.
Present.
Council, next on the agenda, we have the minutes that were in your packet for August 21st, 2024. Any, what is your pleasure?
Moved in second.
Questions, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor approving the minutes as published signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The minutes are approved with seven affirmative votes. All right, next we have a proclamation for Mayor Hawkins for Suicide Prevention Month. Mayor Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. Whereas mental health is part of overall health, and one in five adults experience a mental health problem in any given year, and whereas approximately one-half of chronic mental illness begins by age of 14, and approximately three-quarters by age 24, and long delays, sometimes decades, often occur between the time symptoms first appear and when individuals get help, and whereas suicide is the 11th leading cause of death in the United States and the second leading cause among young adults, and 90% of people who die by suicide had shown symptoms of mental health condition according to interviews with family, friends, and medical professionals, and whereas early identification and treatment can make the difference in successful management of mental illness and recovery, and it is important to maintain mental health and learn the symptoms of mental illness in order to get help when it is needed, and whereas every citizen and community can make a difference in helping end the silence and stigma that far too long has surrounded mental illness and discouraged people from getting help. Public education and civic activities can encourage mental health and help improve the lives of individuals and families affected by mental health and mental illness. Whereas we shine light on suicide prevention and mental illness and fight stigma, provide support, educate the public, and place our full support behind those who work in the mental health field, namely our local partner, the National Alliance on Mental Illness of Southwest Ohio. Now therefore, I, Lauren C. Hawkins III, Mayor of the City of Springdale, do hereby proclaim September 2024 as Suicide Prevention Month. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda, we have a presentation from Denise Dreehouse, who we're honored to have with us tonight. She's Hamilton County Commissioner to give us an update on the county. Ms. Dreehouse, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I thank you for having me. We appreciate the hospitality. So I am out doing what I did back in 2017 when I was first elected to the county commission. Some of you are here, some of you are not, but I did what I called my 49 and 49. So I went to all 49 communities in Hamilton County. I tried to do it in 49 days. It did not work out. It was more like 49 weeks, but here I am again, like a bad penny. I just keep coming back, and I come in the spirit of partnership because at the time I didn't realize the opportunities that existed really by way of partnership between Hamilton County and all of the 49 jurisdictions in the county. But since then, we've expanded our menu of opportunity, which I've passed out to all of you, and we've been very intentional about trying to create more, especially economic development opportunities where we can partner with one another. So I draw your attention to the menu of opportunity. If anybody in the audience, like this is like a nerd's paradise right here, is this menu of opportunity, happy to hand them out to anybody that would like to have one. But it does exemplify some of the partnership opportunities. It can be as simple as buying salt together, maintaining fire hydrants, but some of the bigger ticket items reside in the economic development section. And so I want to say that this has expanded, and so listed here is the revitalization grant, which is meant to catalyze projects in different communities. You all know better than I do what's good for Springdale, and so we make these grants available to communities. It's a competitive process. You applied, you got one recently, by the way, and I'll get into that in a second. But again, it's meant to, for us to help catalyze what's going on in your community because when you do well, we do well, and we all know that, right? And so there are a couple other ones on here. There's the Events Grant. So this is a small Events Grant. If you were to have a celebration, say around the Fourth of July or Harvest Festival, something like that, as long as there is a tie to economic development, you can apply for this grant and possibly get that grant. And then we've got a facade grant, again, meant to, you know, catalyze what's going on in the business district and make sure that people know what businesses are there and make it, spruce it up a little bit. It's a facade program, and we're very proud of that. The other thing, and so let me just get into that real quick because I always bring a cheat sheet when I go out. So I've got Springdale cheat sheet, so I'm going to tell you what we've done by way of partnership. So in '21, '22, and '23, you received the Residential Recycling Incentive Program Grant, and then you got two homeowner repair grants, and then the big one, again, is the Community Revitalization Grant. You did a sidewalk extension, and the total amount there was $304,000. So total in all programs was $363,000. And so I want to say, I don't know who amongst you or who out here does the grant writing for Springdale, but thank you for the partnership because we make the money available. It doesn't work unless you apply for the money, and you have projects that are, you know, that are applicable to the money that we've got available for it. So anyway, I want to thank you for the partnership, and I hope it's been helpful. The other big thing that's happening in Springdale as it relates to the county is we are locating our EMA 911 Center out here. That's a big deal because these are two centers that are located in two different places. We're bringing them together. Of course, there's a nexus between 911 and EMA and the work that they do, the emergency response work that they do, and so we're putting them in the same building. We're retrofitting a building about a mile and a half away from here, and so they will come together in that building. These are folks that are stressed. Think about the person that answers the 911. You know, they're always talking to people on their very worst day, and a lot of times the situations are very dire. And so at the old facility, the facility they're in now, it's rather dark, doesn't have a break room. I mean, it's just, it's just not great for the work that they're doing, and so the new facility will be bright, it'll be more spacious. They are very close to one another and can hear each other's conversations. They have earphones on, but it still can be rather challenging spreading them out a little bit. So again, making sure that they've got good workspaces because it's very hard to recruit and retain people to work for 911. It's one of the places in the county where we really have a challenge, and so we have increased wages, competitive wages, but this facility is going to be part of the equation to retain and recruit people to 911. And so EMA is coming out too. Nick Crossley is the head of EMA. He's super excited about it. Nick's got a lot of trainings for communities. I don't know if you have taken advantage of any of those, but these are like preparedness trainings. He's happy to come anytime, and he's right down the street. So I would encourage you to reach out to Nick if you are of interest for that. It's really quite helpful, and he's just a wealth of knowledge. He lives and breathes emergency management. So some of the things, again, that Hamilton County has to offer, and other than that, I just want to say that we've got a structurally balanced budget as of today. We are in the middle of our budget process. You know how this goes. People have requested or departments have requested more than the revenue that we have available. I don't know what your gap usually is, but ours is 50 million this year. It's a significant gap. Last year it was 40 million, and it was all we could do to close that. So it's going to be difficult, but we're having conversations with the sheriff, with the treasurer, with, you know, with the folks that run all the different departments to right-size that, to make sure that we've got a structurally balanced budget then moving into next year. And, you know, my hope is and my expectation is that these programs that I just listed out for you, that are, these partnership programs survive the budget because these are, they're not something we are obligated to do, but rather something we have chosen to do, and so there will be money set aside for these programs. It's just a matter of degree and how much we can afford to do year after year. So anyways, I'm sure there will be something in the budget for that. And then that's, I've got, there are a million things happening at the county. You know this. I mean, we're building, renovating the convention center downtown with the City of Cincinnati, a true partnership, which you don't always hear on the news, but we partner with the City of Cincinnati all the time, and we're always partnering with folks. So that's going well. It's meant to draw a lot of economic activity into a part of downtown that has not seen much activity in a very long time and make sure that we can attract the conventions that are coming to other places in our competitive set. Think about Louisville and Nashville and Indianapolis. We are losing out because our, I don't know if you've been there lately, it's not a great looking facility, and it's not big enough. And so we are doing some, what we need to do to retrofit that facility, and then there's stuff going on with the Bengals too. But I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, if you have them.
Why wait for those? I did want to say again, thank you. I can tell you, you mentioned the partnership with Springdale. I know from the time that you came last in 2017 and now was one of the first opportunities I had to actually see that demonstrated in practice, and that was during the COVID epidemic. Both you and Jeff Aluto and Nick Crossley managed weekly calls with some of the leaders from all the cities. I was on the calls for Springdale, and just seeing the way that the partnership happened, it was very open and understanding during a very fluid situation that we all like to think is behind us, but watching that partnership and that leadership was, it was impactful, and it had a real impact on us. We have our own health department, so we were unique in that situation, but we were on those same calls with the county, with the county, with the Emergency Management Agency and with you specifically running those. So I know it's been, it's been a minute since those, but I still wanted to say again publicly, thank you for the leadership during that time. It made a difference. Now, that's not to say that we don't appreciate the economic grants.
No, I really appreciate that.
Yeah, it was real. It was real, and we felt it.
Yes, thank you.
All right, Mr. Vanover.
Thank you, Mr. President. Not so much a question, but a comment. We were, well, it's been a year now, we were down there. One of the continuing Achilles' heels of doing stuff in Cincinnati downtown is parking. It's horrendous. We went, we were at concert at, well, whatever it is, Heritage Bank Arena, but the Reds were in town, there were some other festivals going on, and we spent 45 minutes to an hour looking for someplace to park, and it's, that's just one of many. So, you know, and we're expanding the convention center, and that, the parking around that was atrocious, to say the least. So I hope in these upgrades that some of this gets corrected because it doesn't make it appealing, not for local.
Right, and I appreciate that. We have gotten control of the garage across from the convention center. It was owned by an out-of-town group, and now we have control of that through 3CDC, and so I think you will see that improve. And then we've got those parking lots just to the north of Convention Center as well to make sure that we've got the capacity for folks that are coming in. The other thing is, and I don't want to be necessarily known for this, but we do build parking garages. We've got a parking fund because we, we in the city have built all those parking garages underneath the banks and primarily to lift everything out of the floodplain, but also to provide parking for the Reds, for the Bengals, for the Brady Center, for the arena. And so we have yet to build out four of the lots down there. You will see increased parking when we finish that out, so that's coming. But that fund, we've used some of that money to build around the FC Stadium, so if you get onto any FC games, if you park in the garage, that's us. All restricted funds, by the way. It's no general fund money. And then we just built the garage over at Finley Market because there was a real need that were very congested over there, and so the community was begging for a garage. And so we did a kind of a dual benefit by having FC folks park there and then residents and folks that patronize Finley can use that garage. But I hear what you're saying. I know it's a challenge, and so we are trying to use that restricted fund to, and I hear you about Convention Center, I will pay close attention to that to make sure we've got capacity there. Thank you.
Mr. Gleves.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Dreehouse, thank you for coming down. I have a question about 3CDC. I see their signs everywhere downtown in all vacant buildings, and it seems like they're driving a whole pump of entertainment and everything. Do they have any competition?
Well, let me say that the city uses 3CDC a lot, especially along the corridors that are in over the Rhine. I mean, they've done all that development in over the Rhine, and so there's no one in that space necessarily in partnership with the city like they are, and we, to be fair, we are using them with the city to help coordinate the Convention Center work, but there are lots of other developers down there in that area. Model Management is one of them, Urban Sites is one of them. So there are other developers down there that are getting quite a bit of work to develop down in that area as well.
Thank you.
Yeah. No Bengals question, seriously? All right, then I'm getting off easy.
Now, you might, let's hang on here. Resident football player, Mayor Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, if you're going to ask, is Jamar going to sign?
What's that?
It says Jamar Chase going to sign.
Well, no, no, that's beyond my pay grade, for sure. We are starting to, we've all, we always negotiate with the Bengals. We're always in conversation with the Bengals about this, that, or the other thing, but we are having a presentation either next week or the following to have the administrator, Jeff Aluto, present us with the renderings for, you know, the nuts and bolts, what we need to do to maintain that facility. It's old, but it's in great shape because we've maintained it well, and then some of the things to make that facility more accessible and more available to events outside just football games, concerts and high school games and, you know, other things. And so we're looking seriously at that, looking to have a financial stack that includes taxpayers. Y'all paid about 95% of the stack last time. That's not going to happen this time. And so looking for the county to participate, but also the Bengals participate, the NFL and the state of Ohio. And so we're in active negotiations related to all of that, but if you're interested, that presentation will be within the next week or two related to the Bengals and the stadium.
Well, yours now and the county's in the past collaboration with us and other communities is appreciated, and we had some benefit with regard to some grant dollars years ago from the CFA in terms of assisting with some demolition of a hotel, and your continued efforts to provide grant dollars and make sure cities are aware of them is appreciated, and thank you for coming out here and using your time.
Thanks, and thanks for your service on the CFA. Appreciate it.
All right, I don't see any more questions. Again, thank you for coming out. We really appreciate the update and the engagement with the communities.
And I apologize, I have to leave. I've got another engagement tonight. I usually stick around, but I really, really appreciate the partnership, so thanks for having me.
Well, maybe downplay the community grants a little less competitive and maybe focus on the Bengals.
I won't tell anybody else.
Thank you. All right, next up on the, oh, next up on the agenda, we have an update on city branding from city administrator, Mr. Yul.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate the opportunity to kind of share this short presentation with you on our city branding, just to give you a quick update on how we got to this point. Back in 2022, I had a discussion with one of the professors at University of Cincinnati, Blue Ashes Campus, who taught a design and marketing and branding course, and I asked if they've ever done anything associated with a city branding, and she said, no, but do you know of an opportunity? And I said, yes, I do. So we kind of embarked on this journey, and what we did is I met with her students in the fall of 2022 and kind of gave them a quick overview of Springdale. So that whole semester, the students, there was about 30 students, they were broken into two different groups, and they were tasked with digging out the history of Springdale, paying visits out here, and doing a lot of research and whatnot. The following semester, what they did is they came up with imagery and logos and font types and colors and everything. There's kind of a regional color palette of sorts that a lot of communities in southwest Ohio kind of gravitate and work within, so that was kind of their inspiration by way of colors. But in May of 2023, they had this presentation available for us, and Andy Kukta and I went down to meet with the professors, and Stephanie Petties and Lisa Timmon were the two professors that were engaged in this, kind of headed this up, and they put together an entire branding guideline. This is a 92-page presentation, but a lot of this talks about the tone, and there's meaning behind the colors and the fonts, the structure, how things are laid out, you know, there's do's and don'ts. They did a really excellent, just student, and this was all done by the students and helped coordinated by the professors. So this was a real-world project that the students were able to be involved in, so it was a service-based learning opportunity for the students, and I asked what they would do, you know, typically if they didn't have a project idea, and she shared that sometimes they just do like a general, you know, hack me lock and key, and they kind of go along that route. Sometimes the university has special events that they'll do program designs for, but a lot of times they're kind of, you know, making up a company to do a branding presentation for. So the students were actively engaged in this, had questions and follow-up, and, you know, I gave them a history book to kind of go through and pull out some of the different things, but they did a fantastic job here. You know, they have do's and don'ts, so this is like a full-fledged, you know, branding presentation and guidebook that a lot of places pay for. So we were lucky enough to partner with the university. So these are some of the imagery that the students came up with. You can't see, but down here in the corner is the students that worked on these particular logos. Each logo has a story behind it. I can't get into all, I can't remember all of the stories associated with each of these, but a lot of it has to do with transportation network and the accessibility of Springdale, you know, the greenery, the Tree City USA, they tried to incorporate some of that. This is an S and a D, although Springdale is only one word, but they tried to incorporate that. So we took a lot of these different renderings that they had, we brought them back to staff, we talked through them, and then we kind of made a hodgepodge of a couple of different, of the different designs, and then worked with the professors to kind of fine-tune a couple of things, and you'll notice, you know, some of this imagery here is going to look very, very familiar, but they did a fantastic job. We were very excited on what they were able to do for us. We were excited to provide the opportunity for the students to actively engage in this real-world learning experience that they'll be able to drive by, drive through the City of Springdale and see their work coming to fruition. So with that, switch gears here, if I can get this to connect. Don't jump presentations here. Nicole, does that say present? Can't see from here. So our current logo here, the city building behind it, City of Springdale. So what the students worked on and what we kind of hodgepodge together with a couple of different design ideas was this, with the, so the swoosh is to indicate forward progress. That's why you see the tail on the R kind of leading forward, and then kind of the motion with the R, and then motion with the A kind of going through as well. So these are the color palette, and then this is how it looks with different departments underneath it, so that R is intentional to kind of lead into the different departments. So that's a full color version. They did grayscale, they did solid color as well for us, and they also had selected fonts, and so we have a primary font type. If you notice, your legislative summary is all in Poppins. And then if you notice the T-shirts that the mayor has handed out here of late have a very, use that same Springdale in it, so it was kind of a lead-in to this whole branding. So we wanted everything to connect and tie in, but we didn't want to give everything away yet until we had an opportunity to present this before you tonight. And then this is just kind of an image on what it would potentially look on some gateway signage. This is a potential sign that we're looking at replacing out here in front of the city building here with a digital display board. So with that, I appreciate your time, and it was a good experience. It took a little bit of time to get there and to finalize some things. I do have some bags that the Health Department printed up the new logo for all of you after the meeting. I do have polo shirts for all of you as well. They weren't ready today. I will be picking them up late day tomorrow, so they will be available on Friday for pickup, as well as, I think the lapel pins are supposed to be in on Friday as well. So with that, thank you very much, and I'll entertain any questions if you have them.
Don't see any, but thank you. I've heard before that a new branding program is like a new coat of paint on an organization, right? So it really spruces things up, can make it seem fresh and new without changing the strong fundamentals underneath. So thank you for that. It was, I'm sure it was, I'm sure it was rewarding for the students as much as it is for us to work on a real project, so that was great. All right. All right, next we'll move on to communications. Ms. Rutter, are there any communications for council this evening?
Communications, thank you, Mr. President.
All right, next is communications from the audience. This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience that would like to address council for any reason. Simply come up to the podium, state your name and address, and you'd have up to five minutes to address council on any matter.
Julie Tudor, 669 Park Avenue. I was just, wanted to come by and talk a little bit about the homeless man that is on, hanging out on Kemper Road in the same bus stop right in front of my property that I manage. I did send out an email last week. Mayor Hawkins was kind enough to give me a call, which I greatly appreciate, but telling me that we need to call the police, the non-emergency number, if he's inside the bus stop with his stuff, not just a bag, his grocery cart, his blankets, his boxes, everything. So I have called the police. The police evidently have come, so I don't know if the police told him this or he just decided on his own, but now he is just simply right outside of the sheltered bus stop with all of his stuff. He's commandeered the entire bus stop. Nobody would feel comfortable going if they needed to, to sit there and catch a bus. So I don't know if you guys need to pass another ordinance, strengthen the one you have, start enforcing the one you have on the books, but this is just an awful terrible look to this community if this is continued to allow to happen. And oftentimes, he sets up shop and starts selling things to people on the street. So, I mean, we don't want our city looking like the streets of San Francisco, and this is exactly what it's starting to look like. So I would like to know if there's anything that can be done about this. Thank you.
Anyone would like to respond? Mr. Vanover.
I'll just make a comment. I have received phone calls from residents over my area about that, and I have seen from Kemper Road, I have seen him on International Boulevard going from Sharonville to Westchester. I have seen him as far north as Jungle Gems. Matter of fact, when I saw him last at Jungle Gems, he was right in the entranceway, traffic coming in and going out, and he, if you haven't seen him, his cart is about three cars. It is a grocery cart running over, and he's got two or three pool carts. Actually, he had a piece of luggage on, you know, Walker. It's, you know, he camps out in front of, oh, Value City, or not Value City, yeah, Value City, yeah, Burlington, you know, there. So I've gotten calls, and I, you know, I can't, I do echo the concern, and I'll piggyback and add one to it, the panhandling on the exit ramps coming off the interstate, the one coming off of eastbound 275 onto Route 4, and the one that really gets me is the one coming off of westbound 275 onto 747 North because they're in that triangle right there. I don't know, is something, you know, something needs to be addressed, one way or the other.
All right, I know in the past when we've talked about the interstate, there was some concern about jurisdiction, so I know there's some concerns there when we talk about the past. I'm not sure if those were addressed, but one of the issues was that would require state intervention at that location. Mayor Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, you know, these, the issue with regard to folks being without a domicile and being in and around our community came with regard to some attention because specifically that individual, I've seen on a daily basis, but there are other individuals referenced before. There's one individual who will walk out in front of traffic and is at risk of being harmed or causing an accident. And so the thing that I encourage folks to do, and when I spoke with Ms. Tudor, I also, as I told her, I'd had a text message from another resident, coincidental. as I told her, I'd had a text message from another resident, coincidentally the same day, regarding the same individual who he contacted. And I told him, as I told her, and I'd tell any resident, if you see a circumstance, please call law enforcement. We'll do what we can through enforcement. The other part that everybody has to understand, and our law director can speak to, is there are some aspects with regard to constitutional privilege that limit what we can do in terms of freedom of movement. And so we can only, council can only legislate so much, and then we can enforce so much within there, but to the best that we can, through the confines of the law and not violate anybody's constitutional rights, we will do what we can to enforce it. So I tell folks, please call. If you see folks, as indicated, particularly in a bus stop, sort of in that situation, or in a park, what have you, please call and let law enforcement try to address that in that situation. And law enforcement, my understanding, is going to, again, try to have folks, one, be aware of some other options, and two, you know, move along from the situation of being sort of set up and camped out in the shop.
Yeah, and that's an important point to add. We talked about this when we were doing the ordinance around this topic. The police, calling in to the police doesn't necessarily mean you're trying to arrest the person. The intent, the first intent is to try and get them help or services that they might need to be able to get on feet, if that's something that they want to do. I know in some of these cases, we've had challenges with that, where the person just isn't looking for services, they're comfortable moving the way they are, and that's where some of the issues Mayor Hawkins mentioned, some of the challenges we have, is we can only permit it to enforce so much. Did you have another comment?
I did, thank you. But the problem now is, he's not moving. He has taken up residency at this bus stop. He's not, you don't see him on Value City or Jungle Gems anymore. He is perfectly happy right where he is. And, I mean, there's got to be something, I would think legally, that you can do when somebody doesn't move. Mr. Braun, do you have anything?
We can, Mr. Braun, if you have something to add, I'm happy to have you added at this point.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just point out for council, you may recall, it's been a few months ago, you did adopt an unlawful camping ordinance that amended Chapter 140. I just, because I have it on my laptop, I just reviewed it. I mean, the activity you're describing would clearly fall within the parameters of that. So, you know, I can certainly work with Mr. Yule and the mayor to make sure that's passed down to the police. This is a brand-new ordinance, so it may not appear in their ordinance book when they're reviewing things, but we can certainly make sure they're aware of it. I also remember that when this was originally passed, there was some discussion about kind of using a warning system in the beginning, but obviously, if it's continuing, I think that's a policy decision that Mr. Yule can, you know, meet with the mayor and talk to the police about. So, but it doesn't, the legislation passed by council clearly addresses what you're describing.
So basically, then they, he should have to move along, right? Keep moving, or?
Well, I haven't seen the activity, but what I would tell you is, the ordinance that was passed is designed to stop the kind of activity you're talking about.
Right. Because I don't feel like people should keep bugging the police. The police have enough to do. So if this ordinance is on the books, then just, we just need to get the officers to enforce it, right? Okay, I'll keep an eye out. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, if we're going to go back to the police, I remember the discussion in that. Council did have extensive discussion, wanted to make sure that the focus is first on making sure that safety and health issues were addressed, and that was the primary concern first, which includes getting people who want services connected to those services. We're not looking just to jail unhoused, but if it's addressing, it's affecting businesses, it's certainly something we need to address. All right. The floor is still open, if anyone else would like to address council for any reason. Second call. Third and final call. All right, at this point, I'm closing communications in the audience, and we will move on in the agenda to ordinances and resolution. First up, we have ordinance number 47, 2024. This is a second reading. I'm sorry, is, there should be a public hearing attached to this one as well? Is that right? Did we advertise it? It's just not on the agenda, but there's a public hearing attached to this that we'll deal with after reading the ordinance. So, Mr. Jacobs, when you're ready.
Ordinance number 47, 2024. An ordinance approving a zoning map amendment for the property located at 505 West Crescent Hill Road and approving the preliminary development plan for the property. Whereas the property located at 505 West Crescent Hill Road consists of approximately 17.813 acres, the property, and whereas the property is currently zoned General Industrial District GI, and the applicant seeks to rezone the property to Planned Unit Development District PUD for the construction of a multifamily housing development. And whereas on June 11th, 2024, the Planning Commission met and considered a modification of the existing General Industrial District GI to Planned Unit Development PUD for the real property located at 505 West Crescent Hill Road, and an amendment to the zoning map of the City of Springdale. And whereas, the City of Springdale Planning Commission, in considering the application, recommended approval of the zone change for the property from General Industrial District GI to Planned Unit Development PUD, and recommended approval of the preliminary development plan. And whereas on September 4th, 2024, after proper notice having been given, council of the City of Springdale held a public hearing to consider the proposed change in zoning from the General Industrial District GI to Planned Unit Development PUD and the proposed development plan. And whereas upon conclusion of the public hearing, the council of the City of Springdale considered in an open meeting the proposed amendment to the City of Springdale zoning map and the recommendation of the Planning Commission to change the zoning of 505 West Crescent Hill Road from General Industrial District GI to Planned Unit Development PUD and the proposed preliminary development plan. Now therefore be it ordained by the Council of the City of Springdale, Ohio, members elected thereto concurring. Section 1. The recommendation of the City of Springdale Planning Commission with regard to the property at 505 West Crescent Hill Road is hereby approved, and the amendment to the City of Springdale zoning map is granted such that zoning for the property at 505 West Crescent Hill Road is hereby changed from General Industrial District GI to Planned Unit Development PUD. Section 2. The request to approve the preliminary development plan for the property located at 505 West Crescent Hill Road, which have been reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission in accordance with the exhibits listed and described in the attached Exhibit A, which is incorporated herein by reference, is hereby approved, subject to the conditions of the Planning Commission and any other conditions or modifications imposed by council, including: A) Staff, city engineer, and city planners' recommendations and considerations contained in their reports shall apply; and B) As a PUD, this shall include staff, law director, and city's approval of covenants as necessary as it pertains to the project; and C) All mechanical units shall be screened per code; and D) All tree preservation and replacement conditions; and E) Applicants shall work with staff to resolve the shortfall of caliber inches; and F) The revised property shall include 18 to 575 square feet units, 18 583 square feet units, and 18 624 square feet units with dedicated bedrooms. And G) A portion of the south buffer yard is depicted on submitted exhibits, which has a buffer yard of 10 feet, may be reduced to 7 feet with the necessary buffering material as required by code; and H) The southwest dumpster compactor enclosure near the property located at 12130 Springfield Pike or 12120 Springfield Pike shall be permitted a reduction and setback from 20 feet to 5 feet with the appropriate buffering and screening as required by code; and I) All other zoning code regulations and conditions shall remain in effect, and any change to these conditions shall constitute a change in the approved plans. Such changes would require approval from the Springdale Planning Commission. Section 3. Council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions relative to the passage of this legislation were taken in an open meeting of this council, and that all deliberations of this council and of its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action, were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements, including Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code. Section 4. This ordinance shall take effect on the earliest date allowed by law.
If there is a public hearing attached to this ordinance, if anyone would like to speak for or against the ordinance, this is your opportunity to do that. You'd simply come up to the podium, state your name and address, and share information related specifically to this ordinance. So at this point, the public hearing is open, and if anyone would like to speak, this is your opportunity. And for what it's worth, I believe we have some developers in house. Certainly, you can speak now if you want, or when we're in discussions, you certainly have an opportunity, if need be, to answer questions. We can bring you up during that as well. Again, still, this is the public hearing. Second call. Third and final call. At this point, I'm closing the public hearing related to ordinance 47, 2024. Council, you've heard the reading of ordinance 47, 2024, and having had the public hearing, what is your pleasure?
Move to adopt.
Moved and seconded. Questions or discussion? Before we move to questions, I know the developer is inside. If you'd like to have an opportunity to speak to council and ask questions, you're certainly welcome to come up or wait to see if there's questions.
I don't have anything prepared to say, but if there are questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them as they come up.
Could you state your name and address for the record?
Sorry, Spencer Lee, and I reside at 4517 Central Avenue in Indianapolis.
And you represent the developers?
Yes.
All right. Are there any questions or discussion for the item? Mrs. Sullivan-Wessex.
Hi, I don't have anything for you right now. I just wanted to remind everybody on council that this was heard at Planning Commission, actually, twice, and that we would encourage you to be in favor of this. And again, special attention to Section 2A through I as the, as of our rules. Thank you.
All right, I don't see any other questions. I do want to thank you for coming in. We'll still vote on it in a moment here, but I did want to thank you for coming in and being available for questions, even though we haven't had them for you. I know you went through a lot of this in Planning Commission. We, in this group, have the opportunity to benefit from all of that work that you already did, so hopefully this is anti-commactive for you.
Absolutely. It's a little shorter than the last few times.
All right, Ms. Browder, if you'd please poll council on ordinance 47, 2024.
Ms. Sullivan-Wessex?
Aye.
Ms. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Vanover?
Aye.
Mrs. Webster?
Aye.
Mr. Gleves?
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye. Ordinance 47, 2024 passes with seven affirmative votes. And again, thank you for the work that you do in Springdale, we appreciate it.
Thank you all.
All right, council, we're moving on to ordinance number 48, 2024. This will also have a public hearing. Mr. Jacobs, when you're ready.
Ordinance number 48, 2024. An ordinance approving a major modification to the Springdale Lake Planned Unit Development and approving the preliminary development plan for the property located at 12021 Sheraton Lane. Whereas the council of the City of Springdale, Ohio council, has previously approved the Springdale Lake Planned Unit Development PUD, and whereas the applicant has submitted an application for a major modification to the Springdale Lake PUD and preliminary development plan at 12021 Sheraton Lane to change from office use to retail restaurant use for the location of a bodega. And whereas, at its meeting of July 9th, 2024, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the proposed major modification. And whereas, a public hearing was held by council on September 4th, 2024 pursuant to the requirements of the zoning code. Now therefore be it ordained by the council of the City of Springdale, Ohio, members elected thereto concurring. Section 1. The major modification of the Springdale Lake PUD and preliminary development plan, which has been reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission in accordance with the exhibits listed and described in the attached Exhibit A, which is incorporated herein by reference, is hereby approved, subject to the conditions of the Planning Commission, including: A) Staff, city engineer, and city planners' recommendations and considerations contained in their reports. As a PUD, this shall include staff, law director, and city's approvals of covenants as necessary. B) All other zoning code regulations and conditions shall remain in effect. C) Final development plan, which shall be reviewed at a later date. Section 2. That this council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions relative to the passage of this ordinance were taken in an open meeting of this council, and that all deliberations of this council and of its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action, were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements, including Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code. Section 3. That the clerk of council is hereby authorized and directed to notify the applicant of council's action. Section 4. That this ordinance shall be effective from and after the earliest period allowed by law.
All right, there is a public hearing attached to ordinance number 48, 2024. So at this point, I'm opening up the floor for anyone in the public that would like to speak for or against this item. Again, you would just simply come up to the podium, state your name and address, and then share the information that you have. At this point, the floor is open. And again, I'll give you the same opportunity. I believe you're here as the developer. You're certainly welcome to speak now or wait until we're in deliberations.
Sure. Good evening, I'm Craig Abercrombie with Abercrombie and Associates. We're the civil engineer, put the application together on behalf of Sugar Creek. I'm at 8111 Chiviet Road, Cincinnati, Ohio, 45247. We don't really have anything to add. I have Patrick Gillis with Sugar Creek. He can answer any questions kind of regarding the operation of the bodega, and then Dan Franks, our landscape architect, and I can handle any site-related questions.
All right. And we'll get to questions as soon as we get inside into deliberations, when we're done with the hearing, the public hearing.
Thank you.
All right. The floor is still open for the public hearing, if anyone else would like to address council related to this ordinance. Second call. Third and final call. All right, at this point, I'm closing the public hearing for ordinance 48, 2024. Council, you've heard the reading of ordinance 48, 2024, and having had the public hearing, what is your pleasure?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded at this point. I'm open for questions or discussion. Ms. McFarland.
I'll take this one, Megan. This as well has been through Planning Commission a couple times. We worked a lot with the developers and with Sugar Creek to really address some concerns that we had, and they were very open to addressing the issues with being so close to the apartments. So this definitely comes with recommendation from planning as well.
Ms. Webster.
The last time somebody was here, and I asked him a question about the hours of operation, and he didn't really know. Do you know what the hours of the operation will be?
And for the, for people who might not be able to see in the audience, the representatives of the developers are here, certainly you have the opportunity, if you'd like, you can come up and answer the question, or administration might have the answer as well. If you have the answer, please. Again, just if you could state your name and address for the record.
Patrick Gillis, 7931 Mitchell Farm Lane. I believe that was all answered in some of the zoning hearings. It was like going to be like 7:00 AM to maybe 8, 10:00 PM at the latest.
And again, you're here representing the developers, or Sugar Creek.
Yes.
What did you say? I didn't hear you. 12:00 AM?
7:00 AM to like 10:00 PM at the latest. It might not even be 10.
You don't know for sure what they're going to be?
No.
I think it was in the packet. We can take a look.
No, I haven't seen it.
It was, it was part of all the zoning hearings and everything, we addressed the hours of operation.
You think it'll be 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, but you're not sure?
That is the best of my recollection, because it's going to be a bodega with a coffee shop drive-thru and morning breakfast sandwiches.
Are there going to be places inside to eat?
Yes. Tables.
And, yeah, okay. And what kind of food will you have?
Your breakfast sandwiches, and then just lunch sandwiches, maybe pizzas.
So you're not really sure about that either, right?
We haven't developed the full menu yet.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Sullivan-Wessex.
Thank you. Just to make something clear, I want to make sure, this is an Italian bodega, correct? Right? That's what you, that's what it was introduced to, to us, was an Italian bodega? Is that correct?
That kind of theme, yes.
Thank you so much.
I take that back. I missed it.
Okay. All right, any other questions or discussion? I'm not seeing any. Ms. Browder, if you poll council on ordinance 48, 2024.
Mrs. Sullivan-Wessex?
Aye.
Ms. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Vanover?
Aye.
Mrs. Webster?
No.
Mr. Gleves?
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye. Ordinance number 48, 2024 passes with six affirmative votes. Again, thank you to Sugar Creek and the developers for continuing investment in Springdale. I know that facility, where it is right now, is a tough spot for some of your operations, so repurposing it, I think is a great opportunity. So we thank you for joining us. And again, you're welcome to stick around and watch the rest of the sausage being made, or you're pleased, we won't take offense if you leave. All right, next we have ordinance number 49, 2024. This is a first reading. Mr. Jacobs, when you're ready.
Ordinance number 49, 2024. An ordinance authorizing the execution of a grant agreement with the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency for participation in the H2 Ohio Rivers Initiative Chloride Reduction Grant Program. Whereas Section 126.60 of the Ohio Revised Code creates the H2 Ohio Fund in the state treasury to be used for purposes including nature water projects defined in part as projects involving a natural water system that will improve water quality by reducing or aiding in the reduction of levels of phosphorus, nitrogen, or sediment in the waters of the state. And whereas the H2 Ohio Rivers Initiative Chloride Reduction Grant Program was developed to incentivize local communities to implement changes to slow and prevent increased levels of chloride in Ohio's waterways through upgrades to equipment and salt loading and storage areas.
And whereas the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency administers the H2 Ohio Rivers Initiative Chloride Reduction Grant Program with monies from the H2 Ohio Fund. And whereas the city of Springdale, the city recognizes that chloride from de-icers entering surface waters from roadways and stormwater runoff is an increasing water quality concern in the city and state, and whereas the city applied for grant funding through the H2 Ohio Rivers Initiative Chloride Reduction Grant Program to support upgrades to rolled salt application equipment and storage facilities to help prevent overapplication of salt on city roads and reduce runoff into waterways. And whereas the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency has determined the city's application meets the criteria set forth in section one two six dot six zero of the Ohio Revised Code, and has awarded grant funding in an amount not to exceed seventy-two thousand three hundred and eighteen dollars to the city for the purchase and installation of a de-icing truck fill and blend station with two ten thousand five hundred gallon storage tanks. Now therefore be it ordained by the council of the city of Springdale, Ohio, members elected thereto concurring. Section one, that the mayor and city administrator are hereby authorized to execute a grant agreement with the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency for participation in the H2 Ohio Rivers Initiative Chloride Reduction Grant Program, the agreement, and to execute any and all other documents and agreements consistent with acceptance of the grant and participation in the program. A copy of the agreement is attached as Exhibit A and incorporated herein by reference. Section two, council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions relative to the passage of this legislation were taken in an open meeting of this council, and that all deliberations of this council and of its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action, were taken in meetings open to the public, in full compliance with applicable legal requirements, including section one two one dot two two of the Ohio Revised Code. Section three, this ordinance shall take effect on the earliest date allowed by law.
All right, council, this was the first reading for ordinance forty-nine, twenty twenty four. Are there any questions or discussion tonight? Mr. Vanover.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a footnote, the H2 Ohio organization, just this past weekend, was struck by some low-life vandalism to the tune of a hundred thousand dollars. They stole a boat, damaged some monitoring. They monitor the water quality in the Ohio River, and that just, you know, somebody protecting us and doing, you know, a yeoman's work, the lowlife, I hope they get what's coming.
All right, any other questions or discussion tonight? Not seeing any lights, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item. And this is for ordinance number fifty, twenty twenty four. Again, this is a first reading. Mr. Jacobs.
Ordinance number fifty, twenty twenty four, an ordinance declaring certain city property as surplus property and authorizing the sale, disposal, or transfer of surplus property. Whereas council has determined that certain property of the city is no longer needed by the city for municipal purposes or useful as such absolutely or temporarily, now therefore be it ordained by the council of the city of Springdale, Ohio, members elected thereto concurring. Section one, consistent with Article eight, Section C three of the Charter of the City, and as permitted by Ohio Revised Code, section seven two one dot one five, the items listed on the attached Exhibit A owned by the city are hereby declared to be surplus property no longer needed for municipal purposes or useful as such absolutely or temporarily, and that such property may be sold by internet auction or otherwise, transferred or disposed of by the city. Section two, that the city administrators hereby authorized to dispose of said property in the manner specified herein. Section three, council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions relative to the passage of this legislation were taken in an open meeting of this council, and that all deliberations of this council and of its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action, were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements, including section one two one dot two two of the Ohio Revised Code. Section four, this ordinance shall take effect on the earliest date allowed by law.
Thank you. This was the first reading for ordinance number fifty, twenty twenty four. Any questions or discussion tonight? Not seeing any, we will see this again at our next meeting. All right, last ordinance we have on the agenda for tonight is ordinance number fifty-one, twenty twenty four. Again, this is a first reading. Mr. Jacobs.
Ordinance number fifty-one, twenty twenty four, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and the city administrator to execute an addendum to the current agreement between the city of Springdale and Swim Safe Pool Management Incorporated. Whereas with the adoption of ordinance number zero eight, twenty twenty four, the city of Springdale, the city, entered into an agreement with Swim Safe Pool Management Incorporated for the management, operation, and maintenance of the swimming pools located at the Springdale Community Center. And whereas the city and Swim Safe Pool Management Incorporated desire to continue their existing relationship by executing an addendum to extend the agreement for an additional one-year term. Now therefore be it ordained by the council of the city of Springdale, Ohio, members elected thereto concurring. Section one, that the mayor and city administrator are hereby authorized to execute an addendum to the current agreement with Swim Safe Pool Management Incorporated in the amount of one hundred ninety-nine thousand three hundred and thirty dollars for the management, operation, and maintenance of the swimming pools located at the Springdale Community Center, the addendum. A copy of the addendum is attached as Exhibit A and incorporated herein by reference. Section two, council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions relative to the passage of this legislation were taken in an open meeting of this council, and that all deliberations of this council and of its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action, were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements, including section one two one dot two two of the Ohio Revised Code. Section three, this ordinance shall take effect on the earliest date allowed by law.
All right, council, this was the first reading for ordinance fifty-one, twenty twenty four. Any questions or discussion tonight? Not seeing any, we will see this again at our next meeting, and again, this was something that was overwhelmingly supported when we discussed it before, so I'm looking forward to continuing the relationship with Swim Safe myself. All right. Next, we'll move on to old business number ten. There is an item listed on that, which is chapter thirty oh three, ordinance as resolutions. You may recall that we had talked last meeting that we would expect it to have an ordinance that we could look at tonight to adjust or adapt that. In the discussions that Mayor Hawkins and I had as recently as today, and then into last week as well, there was some language that we still needed to clean up and wordsmith a bit, so we weren't able to get an ordinance together that completely addressed all the issues that we wanted to accomplish. So just wanted to give that update to you. I fully expect, and I think Mayor Hawkins will agree, that we should have an ordinance available for council's consideration at the next meeting. Is that right, Mayor Hawkins?
Yes, yes, Mr. President.
So, again, apologies for not having it for tonight, but there's some language we just want to clean up. When we start changing rules of council, we want to make sure that we've considered all the things that it might touch. All right. Is there any other old business that anyone in council would like to bring forward? Mr. Vanover.
Thank you, Mr. President. Not so much old business, but just kind of a comment. I find it rather discouraging that a developer comes in, we're holding a public hearing, and they say nothing. Now, I know planning, and I've been there, and I know the yeoman's work that they do, but this is the only time that that developer will be before council. And that just doesn't sit well with me. We've had others and been called out, but, you know, if... I would think, as a developer, I'm pushing a project, would be proud of that project and want to talk and show to everybody what that project is. And this just is discouraging. My comment.
All right. Any other old business that we'd like to bring forward today? Not seeing any, we'll move on to new business. Is there any new business that anyone in council would like to bring forward? All right, not seeing any lights, we'll move on to meetings and announcements. Ms. Sullivan-Wisecup.
Thank you, Mr. President. Planning Commission will meet next Tuesday, September tenth, at seven PM in these chambers.
Still in meetings and announcements. Mr. Gleaves.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next meeting for the BZA, scheduled for September twenty-fourth, has been canceled.
Thank you. Mayor Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. Community bash is this Saturday, Mud Quest first early in the morning, and festivities starting, I think, around three o'clock in the afternoon. Also, next Wednesday, September eleventh, seven PM at the Rec Center, we'll have a town hall meeting, and welcome, and hope that folks come out, they have questions and want to interact with their elected officials. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McFarland.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next Board of Health meeting will be September twelfth at six thirty, next to these chambers.
Still in meetings and announcements? Ms. Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Sorry, we hit your speaker.
Apologies. Thank you, Mr. President. The Civil Service Commission will meet tomorrow at one, at two PM, adjacent to these chambers.
All right, thank you. Any other meetings and announcements? All right, not seeing any, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item, which is communications from the audience. This is the second opportunity for anyone in the audience that would like to address council for any reason. Again, you'd come up to the podium, state your name and address, and you have up to five minutes to address council in any manner. The floor is now open for communications.
My name is Dora Webster, one two one four two Peak Drive. I'd like to echo what Mr. Vanover said. I mean, I think, not because I found out here tonight on an open meeting, but I think you guys just approved, what, two hundred and seventy-three apartment unit development? And anybody watching this, they don't know that happened. I mean, I really think that was poor of the developer of not giving some overview of what the development is like, and on location. Yeah, I know, it's, you know, some of this showcase cinema property and so forth and so on, but John Q. Public doesn't know that, and he's not going to know anything once this meeting. So somebody, whether it's a developer, if they don't do it, then I think somebody out here in the dais needs to give some overview of what you're doing. You approved a pretty big development tonight, and nobody watching this on TV is going to know that. That's what it's worth. Thank you.
Would anyone like to address that? Ms. Sullivan-Wisecup.
Thank you, Mr. President. On the last meeting of every single month, they ask for all of the committee reports, and every month, they say, "Planning Commission, Mrs. Sullivan-Wisecup." And I give a report, and I've reported on this more than once, because they've come back more than once. So I have reported on this, and if people watch the videos, and if they talk to each other, then they would know that that's what that was. That's why we have our committee reports. Our committee reports aren't for us to talk. I talk all day to my husband and my family. I don't need to do that here. I do this here for information, because that's what you told me to do when you were mayor. You said for me to come and report and do what I'm supposed to do. So I do my part. I can't help it if the people, the developers, choose not to speak. That's on them. No one had any questions. I'd like to think it's because I had explained it, or Ms. McFarland had explained it, because I know that we both talk in tandem a lot, and I appreciate that. We try to do the best we can. We're not perfect. We're not going to give everybody every scrap of information they're always going to want when they want it, but we're going to give you what you need and what we know. And then everybody up here, it's up to you guys to make a decision on what to do. That's all that we can do. That's all that our job is. Thank you.
All right, the floor is still open. If anyone else would like to address council for any reason? Second call? Third and final call? At this point, I'm closing communications from the audience. Next, we'll move on to recap of legislative items and legislation in development. Mr. Jacobs, please.
Counsel, as you review the legislative summary, item one was addressed by ordinance forty-seven, twenty twenty four, an ordinance approving a zoning map amendment and preliminary development plan for the Springdale Cinema Apartment Project at five zero five West Crescentville Road that passed with seven affirmative votes. Item two was addressed with ordinance forty-eight, twenty twenty four, an ordinance approving a major modification to the Springdale Lake Planned Unit Development and approving the preliminary development plan for the property located at one two zero two one Sheridan Lane that passed with six affirmative votes. Items still in development. Ordinance number forty-nine, twenty twenty four received a first reading. That's an ordinance authorizing the execution of a grant agreement with the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency for participation in the H2 Ohio Rivers Initiative Chlorine Reduction Grant Program. Item four was addressed by ordinance fifty, twenty twenty four, receiving a first reading,